All right, so as far as things to order with the Senate Club of the House.
To the point of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll start off with the approval of minutes from the January 28th meeting. Any corrections or additions?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously. Additions to the agenda for this evening?
I do have a planning and zoning committee resignation to add to the agenda. And will you care for it as a donation?
Right.
Yes, that's the Legion Park.
Here's Legion Park, yes.
Legion Park donation request.
Anything else?
I do not want somebody else to say this.
Okay, now I'd be looking for a motion to accept the agenda with the additions for this evening.
I motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Jackie, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously. All right, um, we'll just start off with the additions, um, that way if Danny wants to get going, he can.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. See, I'm nice.
Yeah.
If Dave was here...
Make him sit.
I appreciate it. I'm here to be up here with Legion Park again. Uh, for the last few years, you have generously helped support our efforts out there. Uh, three years ago, you gave us $2,000, the last two years was $1,000, and we have taken most funds and combined them with other fundraisers that we've done, and we hope you can see some of the improvements that we've continued to make out there. And, uh, we think we're a major asset to the community. We had our first meeting of the year, this park board, last week, and of course, bubbling over with ideas of projects that we need to continue to work on. So I actually have two parts to my request tonight. The, uh, first part would be a continuation of what you've done in the past on the donations. Uh, this year, we're looking, and our major, one of our major projects is to do some work in the JV field. The backstop there is just getting bad, allowing a lot of balls to go through. Also, it'd be good if we raised it up a little bit, because there's a lot of fall balls that go out of there toward the streets. And so, that's where we're looking to put a bunch of our money this year. So my first request would be whatever's appropriate out of your donation fund. If you could continue that, we appreciate it. The second part of it is part of our fundraisers, is the banners. Okay, and we've sell the banners on the fence, and the city has had a banner on there. Uh, it's up for renewal, so if you have an advertising budget that would have $400 for two years' worth of banner, I'd put that request in also. So those items for your consideration. If you have any questions about what else is going on there, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Uh, yeah, I'll just say, like, I think I can notice the improvements. Uh, so, the, the big thing out front that you've got there looks really nice, and I know that there's been a lot more that's going on, a lot of concrete work, I think.
We've, we've done improvements both for the fans and for the players. We had, we reworked the whole infield last fall, because there were some uneven areas as you come off foot there. So we're kind of balancing out the, to make the field the best possible that it can be, and then also to improve the fans' enjoyment.
The warning track went last year, too?
The warning track was the year before. Last year was the first year we got to enjoy it. We didn't done it the, the fall before. Okay.
Uh, yeah, like, I, we typically, so we said we did two, and then one and one the last three years.
Yep, yep, and we do have funds available in our donation request. Um, I'm not sure as far as for in our advertising budget, but I can look at that. We'll be back to that next year.
Yeah, we need to pay all the advertising for us.
Because you wouldn't be getting to that piece of it anyway until...
No, that's fine, it's, it's, you know, it's earlier than I normally get to thinking about it, but, so.
Hey, they're earlier than that.
Right.
I don't know, I guess I'd make a motion and we give the $1,000 again. So we've done in the past, and the kids that are out there, I mean, it's from, it goes to both fields, right, JV and the bus.
Yes.
So there's a wide range that we hit with kids, so. I see it as a good, as a good investment, so.
We would like, we would like you to be able to continue to think of it as an investment.
Correct, and it is.
And therefore, you're expecting to see some returns on it, and that's what we're trying to do.
It's fun to see dads and grandpas who now have kids that are playing.
Yeah, right.
That play themselves.
Yeah, and they talked about all those while they appeared.
Yeah.
And all the new kids out there going, "Oh, look at we get to play on that."
Right, exactly. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion if we want to go ahead with the same amount from last year, which was the $1,000.
I made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously.
And then we table the advertising budget until...
You can check the next meeting.
I'll make that motion also down.
May I second Donnie?
Seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously.
I'll plug in for those banners, though I think those are, I think those are cool. Lots of people see them, you can see them as you drive by, and I look at them every time I notice a new one. One time I did notice the city appears, and so those are certain names, I think, looked at by people.
And on behalf of the whole park board, I say thank you. We appreciate everybody's contribution and efforts into making it better. Hey, I thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me an honor.
You're welcome. You just tell Dave that when you talk to him.
But, Don said it'd be a good night, because Dave's not here anymore.
All right, next on the agenda, um, would you be resignation from planning and zoning?
Next this afternoon, we received a, this resignation from Arvin Lickie to resign from planning and zoning committee. So if you guys wouldn't mind, if you've been accepting this resignation, and then I will bring it to Dave and see if you can find somebody to finish out Arvin's term, who's done this end of December this year.
Okay, so there's a mission one year left. Okay.
Do we have anyone in mind? Is that what you said, or no? We have to look for somebody?
Um, I know Arvin gave a few, but we'll give those up to Dave and see if he isn't appointed by Dave.
Oh, okay.
Of the appointed committee.
Okay. And I know Arvin actually told me personally that he would be resigning, and he basically stated lots of basically health issues is why. So he's been doing it a long time, but it's just health issues and things that are starting to catch up, that he said it's time.
He was a lot of history with him.
How long has he been on?
I don't know for sure.
He was on for a long time, and then he was off, and then he was back on. Yeah, that's what he told me. Twenty years sticks in my mind, I don't know why, but he sits up for twenty years, so.
On behalf of the city, we'd like to thank him for his, um, commitment to, to the job and volunteering to do it.
Do we have to do any kind of a motion, or can we just accept it?
To accept it, yeah.
I'll motion to accept it.
Motion on the floor by Jackie, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kyle. All those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. All right. Next on the agenda, SEH. You both might as well come up here, because you're going to be up here for a while.
So, yeah, so all these I can actually follow up to the Public Works Committee meeting. We have like, so, there, not a lot, um, the county is there, as well as, um, like, the citizen at large. But anyway, the first item that I have on the agenda is, we have a local road improvement program with a funding source. Um, and you have a resolution in the packet, let's run, talk about it, but basically, this is a funding source through NINDOT, so it's kind of similar to, we talked about this at the last call, speaking to you, or was it just at the?
No, I think we did.
Okay. I'm repeating myself, okay, but this is, this is a solicitation through NINDOT, so it's similar to like the Safe Runs to School or TAP funding that we, we've received in the past. Um, so there are a few strings attached to it with following NINDOT design standards and things like that. But anyway, this, this program is basically to assist with like regional type projects, road projects, and, and you can, I guess, meld it with pedestrian bike lane, bike trail kind of type improvements or desires in the city, so. And you might not be familiar with this, but we did a trail feasibility report back in 2017 is when we finished it, but the city has, trust me.
You're fine.
Um, the city has a vision to, to create a loop trail around the city that, that connects the Sioux Line Trail, and one of those segments is what we call Segment 1, which is along Conner Road 283, starting on, um, Genoa up, up to State Highway 27, and then on Centennial Drive through the city of Pierce, up to Conner Road 43. And so, the thought was to apply for this local road improvement program funding for the Centennial Drive segment, and, and the scope that we talked about at the, the Public Works Committee meeting would be doing bike lanes, so widening the road out to the comedy bike, bike lanes. So the section that we're looking at is like 11-foot driving lanes and 5-foot paved bike lanes. I think that would be a competitive application in that program. It is competitive, so, I mean, there's definitely no guarantee of getting it, but it's lottery, you got to try, and get a, a bike ticket, but...
What's the amount?
Um, so the, the amount that is eligible for cities, it's up to $750,000, so it's a substantial, counties are eligible up to $1,000, but cities would be $750,000, so you apply for that full amount. Just an update on the Conner Road 283 segment, so again, that's the segment south of 27. The county, I talked to the county engineer last week, um, and they're actually moving forward with the design of that, and they're actually moving it up a year from what, the last time I talked to them, so they're looking at 2020 construction, trying to get that done before the third, so, the world isn't far enough, I think, as we, as we change. Um, and then that sec, so they're looking at two different sections on that, if, if I can, if you want me to digress here a little bit, so they're looking at two different typical sections of the road with styles on that road. The, the south end, where there's the existing developed lots, industrial, commercial, or residential, they're looking at the curb and gutter section, so they're, in their on-road bike lanes or parking lanes or shared lanes, that's to be determined, but they'll be in area beyond regular driving lanes. But they're looking at curb and gutter in that section, and once you get north of the developed area, they're going to go to a rural ditch section, but then they, they're looking at widening it out to that same section that we're looking at for Centennial, so. And then another thing that we need to talk more on, Public Works, but, you know, we've talked about correcting the offset.
Yep.
You know, that'd be the time, whether the city actually does Centennial or full layer or not, that'd be the time to look at addressing that. And there, there needs to be more discussion in the county on that, depending on how funding shakes out for the city's end. There'd probably be some right wing, there needs to be an acquisition with that, of both ends. So, but anyway, that's just kind of what's in the works there, and so, um, and then with this funding source, back to Centennial, similar to the Safe Runs to School or the TAP funding, the transportation alternatives, we need the county to sponsor your application, because you're not a state in the city, you're not over $5,000 population, so, that the direction of the staff and, and the committee, and each other, so the county engineer, he needs to support that, and that's the other thing that's in your packet, um, there's that sponsorship area, so they're, they're willing to, to sponsor you as far as being a fiscal agent, and, and, you know, they grow their interest in, but, but they're saying that all the costs are ultimately going to be borne to the city whenever it's covered by their hands, so. But they still put in a fair amount of staff time, you know, just to help the city through that, it's, it's their job, but still, we're recognizing.
Yep, yep. Good one to say.
So, yeah, so I guess, I don't know if there's more, do we like...
When is this?
This is due by March 1st, so there's kind of a quirk for it, I guess, in NINDOT. The county's going to pass it next week, I guess.
What's awarded when?
Um, we know by the end of legislative session whether this program is funded, it's currently not funded, but with the current elections and all that, but it's like a good chance that they're going to get funded again. Um, and then sometime, it's in July, you know whether or not, if it got funded, we got it.
Okay.
So there's two things, there's a resolution, that's kind of a standard resolution, for this kind of funding source, and the other one is sponsorship between the county and the city. Did you just pass one of those? Or, or not, which special, asking, for the third out of the fourth, the city matches.
It's in order to last year, so you can do the resolution versus the master agreement.
So, yeah, the master agreement is some different sponsorship agreement, so that was a lot of the agenda, so.
Okay, so we're going to do the resolution for, so Resolution number 2019-1102-01. Resolution in support of an application for a local road improvement program grant. Whereas, the city of Pierce has been working with the Moore's County and the community to improve safety and infrastructure on the local roadway network improvement to Centennial Drive, whereas, the local rooted road improvement program has been established through statute 174.52 to, to provide funding assistance to local municipalities, and, whereas, implementation of the Centennial Drive improvements will have a positive local and regional impact to the area, county, and state highway system, and whereas, the city has developed concepts and improvement ideas that can be supported by the city and county, and whereas, the city will enter into agreement with Moore's County to act as the fiscal agent for the LRIP funds for the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Pierce, Minnesota, that the city, that the Pierce City Council hereby supports the application for the local road improvement program grant for the Centennial Drive improvements. And number two, that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign and submit said application, and all applicable contracts or agreements on behalf of the city of Pierce, adopted by the Pierce City Council this, um, 11th day of February 2019.
You guys approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion on the floor by Donnie? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Okay. And then the sponsorship agreement. Um, you guys had a chance to read through this, I'm not going to make, um, read through all this.
Yeah, I did.
Any questions or concerns? Not, you'd be looking for a motion to accept the sponsorship agreement?
For the master agreement.
This is the sponsorship, yeah.
The sponsorship.
Yeah, we just have to do the one that looks like this.
Okay.
That one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the sponsorship agreement between Moore's County and the city of Pierce.
Motion on the floor by Kyle.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Now, I'll just give you a CH master agreement.
Okay, so, this one's a little bit confusing, so, okay, so, one of the things we do with a lot of clients, we have a called master agreement, so, this is basically the same stuff that's in the back of every agreement that you've signed with me so far, it's just that in the future, if we were to do, if you hired me to do something, and you had this in place, then it would just kind of streamline the process, so that you just refer to this, and it, it would instead of being like an eight or 10-page agreement, it would be two, one, two pages. So that's what it is, I mean, I go into more detail than that, but it's kind of, the retake of the general conditions and the ways that we can contract others, hourly or lump sum.
This is some of what we've been doing in the past, just now, in an agreement form?
Well, yeah, it's always been in an agreement form, it's just that it's per job, or now we're going to blanket things.
Yes.
Right, right. Instead of, per job, repeat, you know, all the time, it's, it's like...
But it doesn't commit us to writing different things, it's just whenever we say, God, we want you to work on this, and you say, all right, I'll put something together, and...
Right, yeah, I mean, it's business as usual, it's more of a streamlined, you know, I characterize this.
And I assume if you're going to change anything, then this would become null and void, and when you're, or you're going to send us an addendum, or?
Right, right, yeah, yeah, this is, we don't have to agree to any changes, so, I mean, this is what we have in place.
I recall, just any issues with that?
I'll make a motion to approve the SEH master agreement.
I'll second it. Motion on the floor by Kyle, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Gladly give you all of the information.
Yeah, I'll, we're putting a goal on that line, you know. Okay, so the next one might be getting to some of the stuff that Kyle was asking, but so, so now, from now on, instead of you signing your agreement for professional services and being supplemental letter agreement as well, so, so there's two of them that are on your agenda. Um, the first one is, is more what we call general engineering or city engineering, I call it general city engineering services. So what this is, is basically what, what I would do for you as your city engineer, what we have been doing for you, but this just provides a framework for you to fill hourly for things that, that you ask me to do without having to, like, a big contract, because oftentimes, it's more work for me to go set up a contract internally, go through all the hoops, than, than to actually, because I just did, but, you know, you can pay for some of that stuff. But anyways, typical city, city engineering services would be like site plan reviews, if you have some development, or, everyone else will have lots of, you know, this drainage thing, take a look at that, or, um, maybe you have a structural review that you want us to take a look at, and we did some stuff in, part, let a player haul there one year, which I didn't set a contract for that, but, um, just things like that, updates to the capital improvement plan, there's some updates to that that happen from time to time, um, just any number of things that we've done, I did in detail in this, this letter agreement, but, both we would, I mean, every year, my understanding, most cities do it, and we talked about that, the Public Works Committee meeting, cities budget a certain amount of money for general engineering in your budgets, and again, it's not telling me, clear to spend that much money, you still have to request me to do something, but we go with what your budgets are for the year, so my understanding is your budget's $15,000 for general engineering, so, that's what I referenced in the cover letter, so.
So not to exceed that, no?
Right.
Any Bob, any questions or concerns at all? Anybody else have a chance to kind of read through, any questions, first of all?
You're going to quickly think of this whole thing, so you're going to go through the punch list, you're going to monitor the position of it all, all that stuff.
That's separate from this, this is, that'd be more like a project type thing, so we'd have, definitely have to separate everything after that, but this is more of like the smaller stuff, day to day.
Printing maps for us when we call you and stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, there's activity on some of that stuff, but, yeah, mapping updates in general, and, and development money, and, you know, the monthly, something now, or something like that.
Show them the comments on the news.
Actually, that, we wrote, it's in writing.
That's the last thing.
It's, uh, yeah, it's not, yeah, we don't charge for a couple of days, so, that is good, we keep it coming.
That's actually in writing, so. I hate to not have to, right, coming for free.
Well, yeah, that's, that's where the business is.
So I'll make the motion to accept the supplemental letter of agreement for the city's general engineering services.
Motion's on the floor by Donnie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The last one is, I say, or supplemental letter agreement for a payment, um, payment plan.
That's one I can separate.
Yeah, I apologize, they spent driving it, or, I had all the attachments, and I didn't hear until like 6 o'clock, but, anyway, yeah, that one went this morning. Um, so, yeah, so what Bob is looking for, and other cities have done this to, help other cities with this, is, so you have your capital improvement plan that you've been working on, it's a living document, that's typically with mayor projects, so, full down to reclamation, or, 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 sorry, or maybe it's your auction project or something, a little bit bigger, like, or, that's what I would call a capital improvement, but definitely there's maintenance, you know, you can forget about your road maintenance, so, talking about that, what our definition of that is, it'd be, like, overlays, crack sealing, and seal coating, and, I think every year, it's kind of like, well, what do we, which street should we target, or blah, um, if you'd like to come up with a plan that looks out several years, so, yeah, it needs to be reviewed, and it's a living document, but it has more of a planning element to it to look out, not have to think as much each year as to which one to, and, better yet, to try to get a potential cycle going, and then help you with your budgeting, on how much budget each year for, for doing that, so.
A lot of people know, live on that, potentially.
Right, there's a lot of benefits to it.
The biggest benefit is, um, like, by the way, you spend thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to build, and you can maintain those for 30 years or something like that.
So, so part of that convenience thing, or, what I was saying about, not having to think about as much, I mean, it's not that there's thinking that goes into this, because actually, you use some science in this as well, because the plan would be to go through all Bob's records from what he's done so far, and then put some science and engineering into it as far as, like, when you should do these other improvements, to what Bob's said helped, you step away from the painless. Timing's kind of everything, a lot of, it's like improvements.
You'll see how, you know, what streets are ridden on more, and, and different things like that.
I motion to... Did you have anything else, Bob, that you wanted?
I know I didn't have a lot of time to review that.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you'd like to table it and look at it and have to take a peek at it, too, and there's no hurry on this, particularly on one.
Right, yeah, I mean, not necessarily, I mean, I think you're doing something this year, but there's still time.
We'd like to do something this year, but it's your time for answers.
Well, I mean, part of it, what I said is, we want to have the snow con, so we could, I could go look at stuff to kind of truth out what we're thinking, you know?
We could still be made this year without, you know?
Yep, yep. No, I think that's a good idea, you should really go through this on an aggregation ticket, you got it, too.
I got it, yeah.
So we'll be looking at a motion to table, um, this agreement, pavement management plan, until the next meeting, when Bob and Dave have had a chance to look things over.
A motion to table it or not?
Motion on the floor by Kyle, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please signify by standing aye. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Scott, you got anything else? I think you've covered a lot tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You dressed in.
Just barely.
Alright, so we're up to city council camera purchase.
Oh, yes. So, as you know, our sound system is not the greatest on our Channel Ten, so we're hoping that we could update the, the camera that we use for meetings, this would include, um, a camera, so it'd be an SD card, a case, a battery pack, a new camera, and a stand. So, our stand currently is not up to today's part, it falls apart on us, and it's held up by an election machine, and, you know, so we're just looking to update that, and hopefully with including the microphone on it, that it would, it'll solve our issue. So, uh, the total for that would be, it's in your packet, it says fourteen hundred, it's actually nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The product total here was, it included one tablet and a, and a case, so, that's a separate thing coming up. So, I would be looking to approve the nine hundred and thirty-four dollar and ninety-five cent purchase from Best Buy, if they still have that available.
And you said you had about six thousand in your budget for it?
Yes, and I actually, yeah, that was for, um, our dedicated fund, and actually, it was in the budget today, we have, if I were to use it, I'd use the office equipment and furnishings, so I have about four thousand in it.
And this would actually give you longer, um, recording capabilities too, for...
Yes, our battery only lasts a little over an hour now, so, if our meetings go a little longer, we're, I think we'll have it cut, cut off.
And sixty-four, do I, it's gonna be enough?
Yes, that would be plenty.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the new camera for nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion on the floor by Kyle, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Uh, second part of this is the tablet purchase.
Yes, so, the tablets you, you currently are using were hand-me-downs from...
Or not.
They were not using, the hand-me-downs from NJPA, now Sourcewell that they have an option and they were free, um, but yes, as you all know, that they don't work very great, 'cause they're about nine to ten years old. So we found the, the best option we could find is at Best Buy for a tablet that is, um, two, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, so for six of them, it would be about fourteen ninety-nine. And then also included would be, uh, a case for each one of those at forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total of two ninety-nine ninety-four, for a grand total of seventeen ninety-nine eighty-eight. So, all together with the camera and the tablets, you would be looking for a total of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. So this, you know, I was thinking that it would be nice for you guys to have tablets that charge and have, poor Jackie hasn't had a tablet yet, so...
That's all right. Um, I know Dave was wanting you to see if there were those, that same kind of program, did you have a chance to look at that?
Program.
Like, were you adopted free?
We did.
Okay.
Yes, so we looked at the options, like, there's nothing on there, we even looked at the camera, they didn't have anything on there either, and then, um, reaching out to Sourcewell, they kind of, a lot of people with staples, company staples, and then looked on their website, and the tablets were more expensive than what Best Buy had to offer, so, you kinda gotta go where the deals were, we had a different one, and I missed out on the deals, so we looked at this one, so, yeah.
Week by week, they change the version of mine.
I also make sure we got, and we did it, so, I motion that I can get something that, if these lasted ten years, and you got the, you're getting the protection plans, I noticed that, um, even the accident protection plan.
Well, I guess I never really looked into that.
So there's that one year and the two year, I mean, maybe just looking at, I know that for five, it's an additional cost of the fifty dollars, but, I don't know, looking at the warranty of what they offer.
It's gotta be fifty bucks per each one, the other ones.
From everything that I've heard about people who buy the protection plans, is they're really sometimes they're worth their money, because you gotta pay so much to fix it anyway, you still have to pay a deductible hundred dollars, and like, that's what I've heard from people who buy it on their phones.
Right, Best Buy keeps, well, it's a little different, like, depending, so, I mean, like, I had a computer over there, and I literally take it in, and I completely crashed, and then fixed it for free, so I don't know if that's...
So...
As well, if your purchases come up to you.
I guess the other issue when I look at my warranties too, is is something gonna happen in the first year, is it gonna happen in like the third year when the warranties are gone?
Right.
Well, a lot of times, you take a risk.
A lot of times, you get a warranty with it for the first year.
Yeah, for the first year, depending if like the menu, like mini venture.
Right.
I had a solid on here, so I just wanted to make sure it didn't include that in the price.
No, it is not.
Okay.
I will, you did not get a protection plan, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And I think as long as you have this in your budget.
Yes.
Be in agreement with it also, 'cause there's nothing more frustrating when technology doesn't work. However, I will say, this one works.
Seriously, I keep that.
Yours and Linda's works pretty good, I don't know what Donnie's.
Mine, this one will hold a charge for three weeks.
We couldn't get Jackie's to work at all, so...
We just need to make sure you know which ones we don't throw.
When I walked in, I was at a hundred percent, and I'm down to eighty-five. So don't make a long meeting, I don't know how to do this.
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna end here. Alright, I'd be looking for a motion to go ahead with the tablet purchase.
Yeah, Jackie made the motion, I'll make the second.
Second?
That we purchased the tablets, but not the, not the one that didn't work.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, motion on the floor by Jackie, seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, carry unanimously. Thank you for doing that research.
Yeah, Carrie, I'll wait, but I can't think of the whole credit.
Oh, go ahead, she's on her date.
Will our calendars and everything transfer over?
It should, yep.
Okay.
Hopefully get everything...
Looks like there's a pen, that, a pen, that, I'm gonna look at something.
Hope so.
Yeah.
Jeez, have to teach me how to use Samsung, step, I'm an Apple guy.
I know, me too.
Alright, next on the agenda is the Great River Regional Library two thousand eighteen annual report.
Yeah, so if, um, each year, the Great River Regional Library brings in their report from the Pierce's library location, in your packet, if you can see, I just highlighted a few things to note here, two thousand eighteen total circulation was thirty-five thousand and eighty-two, it's an increase of point three percent from two thousand seventeen. Yes, I agree. And I know, they do a wide range of crafting programs, things to highlight here, they said we offered numerous programs to a wide variety of audiences, for instance, the one-man circus show, Pine Size Polkas, the Rachel Prague Fun Show, Remarkable Reptiles, and the Stuffed Animals Sleepover, we had a few musical performances by guitarist Angie Hoff and pianist Andrew Walsh, the Pierce Sealy High School Jazz Band performed at the Pierce Senior Center. So they do quite a few things, they have book clubs that go there, uh, the Pierce School District has continued to patronize the Pierce's public library to offer more resources to the high school students and early children education participants, and they also wanted to send out a special thank you to Bob O'Treba and Fred Underhill for their continued help and support, they appreciate all that they do for the public library, I know Bob's always going over there and Fred and everything, so, hoping out everything. They wanted to send a thank you to the City, Pierce City Council, um, for the continued support of the library, they just said the library continues to be a gathering place for children, families, teens, adults, and seniors, they offer a clean, attractive, warm, and inviting space for the community, and they truly, they are truly thankful for the city for providing our community with this space. Kinda nice of them to say.
Yep.
Yeah, for a great service, and they're, they're always busy. I agree. It's nice for the kids to have someplace to, really have that offer to them.
Um, do we need to accept this report?
No, it's just a, the annual report that they do.
Department reports, um, Chris is not here this evening, fire department, Bob, do you have anything else?
Just wanna say thanks for the support, current visits, supportive of the city stuff, and I appreciate it. The way Joy stepped up, yeah, the cord is a bit too, um, slow, truck is actually finishing up, I don't see, I don't see, maybe, was an issue with the sensors, transmission, talking with the engines, that's fixed, and hopefully it's, you'll have to get it to me in a few months. Um, park board, the rates for the upcoming season, that we have been discussing, just a thought, you have a Pierce's original banner, if the city doesn't wanna have a city of Pierce's, I would try some budget on there, so you need to, you need to have that.
I agree, I think that's a really great idea, let's advertise our, our business.
Especially with this kids' term, that's...
There's a lot of the kids that, they camp down, and their parents, they come for that big tournament.
I have been home to the Kalamazoo Hall for, and for weeks.
But do you support it?
Do you like the Pierce Go-Force Camp Road banner, so like the city of Pierce, or maybe kind of combine it all?
Either or, I mean, I mean, if I just to be the, the full golf course.
I mean, we're advertising the city of Pierce in the title, so...
Yeah, let's talk about that at our next meeting, when it comes up to approve it.
I wonder if the four hundred dollars that you mentioned was just for renewal, 'cause I know when you first thought those, they were four hundred, there was something else, 'cause it was the cost of the banner, maybe, so I don't know if we decided to switch up our banner, would we have to pay more at four hundred? I guess that's...
And I don't know anymore, it's in the law on the board, but I thought the startup was a hundred dollars to make the banner, and have, it's probably signed two dozen of them, so I think it was a hundred dollars originally to go through to do it all, and I think the Legion Park Board paid that money the first time around, and then they said, now, if you ever change your cell phone number, or change the name of a business, then that would be on person.
That's what you get.
But I think we can work with them on that.
It may be very well worth the cost.
But I, I agree with you that, right now, I don't remember what it says, it's something like, uh, come and join Pierce's, or whatever, they've all, Pierce's, or whatever it was, but, it's a great idea to do the golf course, to do anything.
I agree.
A lot of people see this, so...
Oh, and it's investing, and it's a business.
Amazing, my helping people.
That's probably, it's on, that's...
Actually, uh, we've probably, over the past several years, most of them probably have been extra, and they wanna be on thirty-nine, but those people who wanna, they'll, they'll pay double to be out there, because everybody driving on thirty-nine coming in, tell her leaving, sees those made up.
That's out of that.
But it's a city, every year, it gets switched all over.
They change them.
The people that wanna pay the extra, they put out there, everybody else gets either on that outside of the varsity field, or somewhere around the inside.
Maybe state things in that format?
Yes.
See if they can, see where I can get them back for something.
He's gonna send you a Denny.
Okay.
Denny's who goes to Froggy Signs and has everything done, and he will also, you give him a rough idea, he goes in there and has, lay one out, and then, they'll send you a copyback saying, you wanna add something, or is it good?
Well, we use Froggy's too, so they might have some more stuff.
They, they would, yeah.
I think it's important to invest in the community, and it's a business where we employ people, and, the more people, the busier it is, the more people you can hire, and it's easy to lease, so, we have to pay a little bit extra to put it where other people can see it, I really think.
We all know we're in the city of Pierce, if we can advertise what we have to offer, let's do it.
Right, I agree, hundred percent.
What else you got for us?
Um, all fantasy will be starting next Tuesday, so we have tomorrow, and that, just the thing at the park board was, it might be helpful, make a lot of noise, and get some first direction from council, working towards, working towards a banner, to, basically...
Put that on our workshop, or, or...
I think that would be helpful to people.
Thanks, Bob. Eric, he's not here tonight, Cole, did we give you anything?
He did not, no, he was super busy today, I think I seen him once today, so, just run around and...
Cole, anything you got for us?
I do not, I am due into the audit, they were here today, Friday they were remote, they didn't really have too much for me, so I took it as a good sign.
Not before.
They will be back tomorrow, so, I mean, hopefully a half a day, but you just never know, they might be, if they're here till about five fifteen tonight, so, yeah, it's...
It's stressful. Super, super working on that, but...
We'll have some things that they, so that they have, we'll have some findings, so, the things that I can prepare for this, I mean, maybe if we don't have findings, we can, we can all wait for, at the next conference meeting.
Sounds good. Financial, we've got some bills to pay, claims. Just to review those, any questions for Cole? Not, I'd be looking for a motion to pay the bills. Motion. Looks like the amount, I can see, is that what you have on, two hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-three eighty-nine?
Thank you.
Is it a good number for she? Yep. Motion on the floor by Jackie, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Anybody else have anything? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by Kyle, seconded by Jackie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, buddy?
Yes, all good.
So ashamed, all bad.